Okay, good evening. I'd like to call and order the regular board meeting of the DeSoto Area School District, Monday, January 18, 2021 at 7:04 PM in the Mill High School Commons. Roll call, please, Gary.
Jess Portman.
Yes.
Mary Jackson. Phil Calliday.
Ryan Hutchinson.
Yeah.
Jeff Long.
You will not be here this evening.
Rick Pedretti.
Yes.
Darius Binger.
Yes.
Diane Venner.
Yes.
And Kevin Moss.
He'll be here shortly.
Prove him giving public notice, please, Lynn.
The meeting was publicized by posting on the school doors, banks, and post offices in DeSoto, Fairville, Genoa, and Scotter, Pronto, and DeSoto, Fairville Cheese Store and Fairville and Red Mount Store on January 15, 2021, printed in the broadcast around the same date and broadcast over WVRQ radio.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
And I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Okay, motion by Brent, seconded by Darius. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did anybody wish to address the board with a public comment?
We have, there's nobody in attendance, and we received no letters directed to the board's attention by 3:30 PM deadline today.
Good, thank you. Then we'll move to committee and other reports. First one, 6.1 is the Curriculum and Technology Committee report.
Yes, the Curriculum and Technology Committee met on January 12 to review the 2021-22 new and/or modified high school courses, along with the 2021-22 High School Course Handbook and the 2122 School Calendar Proposal. Those are coming forward in tonight's meeting for board action.
And then the next item would be, did you may have any questions? If not, the next item would be Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee meeting.
Which met on January 14 to review middle school and high school roof bids from Lettigar Roofing and Custom Foam Roofing, retaining wall information on the retaining wall above the pit, a track feasibility study which was first conducted in 2014, school safety assessment update, the DOJ School Safety Grants update, seasonal part-time and substitute custodians, and community and youth program use of facilities. Additional information will be presented in tonight's board meeting for action items and as part of the Building and Grounds report.
Thank you. Item 6.3 is Finance and Personnel Committee report.
Also met on January 14 to review 2020-21 compensation packages for teacher support, staff, and administration, the 2122 school year calendar proposal, alternative work arrangements, Pandemic Lead Act, job reclassification, and received a business office update from Diane Kurtzborn, our business manager, and Lisa Garvelia, our school accountant.
Thank you. Our first item of business then will be the approval of receipts and expenditures. Anybody have any questions? I got a few answered for me. No questions, then I'd ask for a motion to approve the receipts and expenditures as presented. I'll make that motion. Motion by Jess, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Our next item of business is the approval of the minutes dated 12/21/20. Otherwise, hearing no questions, I guess I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Motion by Kevin, seconded by Brent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is 7.3, resignation, hiring, transfers, and approval of all the periods.
Second to get to the pages. Granny Erkey, our middle school high school athletics director, is recommending Rachel Giannoli for the position of middle school basketball coach. We found out that our numbers for the middle school girls program were much larger than we anticipated based on the initial signup. We're glad to see the interest in the program and the number of girls out, and so we are adding her to the middle school coaching staff. She'll be working with head coach Hillary Barck-Herman. In addition, Mr. Erkey is recommending that Mr. Rick Pedretti continue in his position of a volunteer unpaid coach for DeSoto Middle and High School Track Team. Mr. Pedretti has served our district in several capacities for several years, including this particular position, and we appreciate his ability to maintain positive working relationships with our student athletes, as well as serve the number of students out for the middle school and high school track program. We make a special note that because Rick serves on the school board, why he's fully qualified and has met all the requirements to be a coach by WIAA standards, and through his experience and knowledge, because he's a member of the school board, he must serve in an unpaid coaching capacity. And those are our two submissions for this agenda item.
Just, I'd ask for a motion to approve those recommendations. Motion by Gary, seconded by Kirk. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries and put down that I abstain. Okay, with that, then we'll move on to donations. Item 7.4.
We received a very generous $1,000 donation from a member of the community to support the music program, and we're very grateful because this is an ongoing donation of this individual to our program.
That is very nice. Any questions? I guess we need a motion to approve that donation because of the amount. Do we have to now or do we change?
Yeah, over $500.
Okay, I don't know if we adjusted that policy or not. Okay, so we need a motion to accept that donation. Motion by Kirk, seconded by Brent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next, were there any fund-aid requests that came in?
We had no fund-aid requests submitted.
Okay. And we go to 7.6, which is open enrollment space designation.
And Mrs. Moline will join us at this point. She has been our designated administrator to provide information on open enrollment and space designations for our district.
That's in your packet, you'll see. Oh, she'll probably tell you that.
Yeah, excellent. Well, thank you so much. I have listed in your packet a sheet just listing what we're hoping to move forward as an administrative team for our recommendation. As you know, last year, moving for this academic school year was the first year in which we changed some of our recommendations for limiting or basically opening up spaces for students to open enroll into our great district. That being said, the reason for that was twofold. One, because we felt that we were able to sustain the amount of students we could bring in, and second of all, the state statutes, as we continue to learn more about them, there's rules in which students aren't allowed to come into the district for various reasons, and that makes our decision obviously a lot easier as we move forward in knowing how to project those numbers into the upcoming school year. So again, this open enrollment would be for next school year for the 2021-2022, and that these limits would only apply for the actual normal open enrollment period, not for the open enrollment exemption timeframe. As you'll note, basically district-wide, through both elementaries, the middle school, the high school, and the virtual charter school, we're recommending that there's no limits placed outside the statutory requirement. So we wouldn't have any limits for those that are applying into the school district under open enrollment unless they didn't meet some specific guidelines. The same is true for special education. No limits would be placed either in that situation. An example would be someone would be denied if they are requesting open enrollment into our district, and maybe they're requesting with their IEP, speech and language services because that's what they qualify for. Our school district uses a speech and language pathologist, which is an independent contractor, and a purchase service for our district. So because we don't automatically have that person on staff as an expense that we have to pay for each person who's receiving those services, it's unfortunate, but those types of situations result in a denial as part of the statutory requirement. So that helped us, like I said, as administrative team, base our decision and our recommendations with no limits district-wide in all areas. So anyone have questions on that? I know we talked a lot further about it the start of our last school year about this time as we made new recommendations.
Karen, this might be a question that's more appropriate for Scott, but maybe you know the answer. The virtual school, the 32 students there, how many of those are resident students? You know by chance?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I probably could figure it out by the time I make my report.
Oh, good. Only if it's easy, don't worry about it.
It's not, yeah, it's pretty easy. So I could definitely look at that and I'll report that back out. And then I did note, as Mr. Pedretti was referring to, I noted how many students are enrolled in each one of our school buildings as of our January count date that just happened, as well as how many students are enrolled in our, that we're servicing through our special education program. So I'll report that back out by my report.
Thank you.
Yep, any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Moline.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, our next item is the candidates for school board.
We have three candidates who will be on the ballot for school board, and the three board members who are running again are Ryan Venner from the town of Virgin, and Darius Binger from the village of DeSoto, and Brett Hutchinson from the village of Fairville. So we thank these board members for their continued interest in serving on the DeSoto Area School Board.
Yes, thank you. There's no questions to that.
Motion and opposite.
No. Okay, so moving along then to 7.7, I'm sorry, 7.8 is the Board of Canvassers for the April election.
We'll need two members of the board to assist Gary with canvassing the votes. It cannot be one of the individuals running for reelection. So it would be nice.
I can do it.
Rick would be one.
But what, what time of the day will we be doing that? Of course, the track will be going in the process.
Usually sometimes in the afternoon.
I mean, if it's before school, that's how they can do it. Track will be going on.
Kirk, you have your hand up?
No, Kirk did.
Good, because Kirk's got lots of experience. And we need one more.
Oh, please, two.
Oh, Kevin.
Rick and Kirk and myself.
And Kevin.
No, no, no.
We only need two?
Three.
Three.
You said Rick, Kirk, and Gary.
Well, to assist Gary.
Oh, I thought you said you needed two to assist.
It says, we will, oh, yep, that's correct. We'll need two members of the board to assist Gary.
Kevin, why don't you walk in the comments?
I'll just back up.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, so with that, we move to 7.9. We have a Start College Now request revision.
Yes, and this is slightly modified than when you received it. Mr. Granny, is Jenny Rappringer joining us tonight?
She's not online at this moment.
She's not online at this moment, okay. You received a letter from our school counselor indicating that one of our students is interested in Start College Now program and taking some WTC courses. Since this letter was submitted for the board to review, WTC has informed us that a couple of the classes are not going to be available for him to take. So he has switched those classes to take through WTC, DC Circus, Economics, and Speech. The Start College Now program will fund one of those three courses. So the other two remaining courses will actually be less, there's only five credits instead of six credits, so the board would be picking up the cost for one less credit. Those courses aren't available for dual credit. We do teach economics here at DeSoto High School, and we do have an English class with presentation skills and public speaking as an emphasis in that class. However, those aren't available for dual credit. If he takes it through the Start College Now program, he'll be able to earn college credit, and that's what he's asking for. There's no deadline date on his application for this.
Is that the way the policy is? They have to be dual-credit or they just have to be courses that aren't offered here?
Well, he would like to, Start College Now means you're going to earn college credit, and because we don't offer those for college credit, we have to take them at a college.
As long as we're not setting any precedents that we don't want to set. All right, with that.
So we would need a motion to approve this.
Need a motion then to approve that. Motion by Darius, seconded by Kirk. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Did we approve those who are joining you?
What was the question?
We just, we got their names, but it calls for a motion to approve.
We did that?
No, that isn't usually a call for a motion to approve.
Okay, as long as we have volunteers.
Right.
I just noticed that it was put in the, put in the minutes, so I thought I better check.
We've never taken a motion to approve.
No, just.
To approve volunteer board members. To serve on a.
All right. Okay, 7.10, we have early graduation request.
You have two that are coming before you, and I, we included the policy. One was in your folder on the table toward the back of that particular folder. You'll find it for one of the students, and the other student was in your packet mailed to you. Both are requesting for slightly different reasons, but they're due to employment opportunities. The one that was in your packet is an opportunity for this individual to take on an apprenticeship as a welder at Darielam Power Plant. The other one that was in your folder today is a student who's currently working full-time at Goodwill and has just been offered a full-time position working for QuickTrip, which will open up for that individual in approximately two months. And so both are requesting the early graduation. Our policy no longer has a deadline date in which students can apply for the early graduation or that to occur during the first semester of their senior year.
Any questions? I'd ask for a motion then to approve the request. Make that motion. Motion by Jess, seconded by Brent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We wish much success to those two individuals as they move into adulthood and the responsibilities associated with full-time employment, and we wish them well. Both individuals are more than welcome to return for graduation ceremonies in May.
Okay, our next item of business is winter sports update.
Mr. Erkey is here to join us tonight. He is, even with COVID and not having as many games, he has been actively scheduling and rescheduling and working on COVID-related issues, as well as spectator issues for our different sporting events. So welcome, Mr. Erkey.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen here, and then you also were all given a copy of my PowerPoint, and then I think I heard you say that you also got a copy of our seating sheets here. And I just wanted to kind of give everybody an update on what's going on here with, you know, the ever-changing rules and expectations that the WIAA has. So I kind of want to just give you a brief look at what we're doing here, moving, you know, towards the end of winter sports season and then on to spring sports season because of the changes that we've made. So for basketball, for boys and girls basketball, you can see the dates here, regionals beginning earlier, February 9th for the girls, and then 16th for the boys. As I mentioned up top, the high seed will host. So this is different as far as in the past, if you were a team, you know, in regionals, the first three regional contests, the high seed hosted, and then in the past, there would be sectional sites that were determined before the season had started with COVID, and you could read like the cover sheet I gave you as well. They have elected that through sectionals, even the higher seed would host. So for example, if you look at the boys' basketball sheet and the girls' basketball sheet, we are in sectional 3C, meaning if we came out of that sectional or that regional, we would go into the pool for sectionals in which we would, they would have a seeding meeting again, and these teams would be reseeded with the higher seed hosting. So that's just something to look forward to as we start here. As you can see, girl state is at the end of February, and boy state is the first week of March, where normally we are at the middle to end of March during these times. Gymnastics, we have one gymnast, and she'll be competing in sectionals on one of the mentioned dates here. It appears the Platteville-Bowmont and Lancaster School will be hosting that. And then, like always, state gymnastics will be held at Wisconsin Rapids-Lincoln High School. Wrestling, this is coming up next weekend. We actually just found out about all of these pairings last Friday, I believe. And so a quick kind of rule or expectation update too that the WIAA came up with, so starting this coming week, up to six teams are allowed at a contest, whereas we started the year with only duels were allowed, and then a couple weeks ago, they determined that it was okay to have up to four teams. This week is six teams, and then the following week would be eight teams. And basically what they're doing there is basically allowing, you know, the amount of teams that would be paired with us to be at a tournament. There is no location for a state tournament yet, and what they've kind of told us is that there might be three different locations for each division, and they're going to try to get this done in a single day. So again, that's going to be a big change from what we are used to. And then moving forward, I just kind of wanted to give everybody a heads up, because we played football in the fall and volleyball and cross-country in the fall, we will not be taking part in the spring football season. So because of that, the winter sports are going to be ending early, and spring sports are going to be starting late. So the earliest practice for baseball, track and field, and softball is all going to be the 19th with the earliest game on the 27th. Baseball is the only exception where they have a pitcher instruction week, basically gearing up to get kids' arms ready to play. Baseball regionals, you can see the dates here. Now, because we're starting late, the plan is to go a little bit farther into June. Softball is very similar to that. You can see the 29th and the 30th is the state tournament dates. And then finishing with track and field, again, these are all within the same timeframe. So I guess my last order of business would be to just kind of inform you, we've been meeting as athletic directors, and we are again next Wednesday, I believe, but I've had a lot of conversations with Mrs. Granny and coaches and other athletic directors, and I've been a big advocate in our latest meetings for at least having a conversation about spectators. I think that our process has been great. I think people and our fans have been respectful of our expectations. And the vibe and what we're hearing from around the area and the state in a lot of places is people are, the restrictions are kind of, I wouldn't say completely loosening up, but people are more willing to allow a couple more people into events. So whether that be at some schools, they might be going from two to four guests. Some people are starting to include student bodies in these events, which brought me to, you know, having discussion with athletic directors about the possibility of getting, you know, like for our senior night and our parents' night, getting those seniors that haven't gotten to watch their peers play to come in for this game. What we would do is we would mark off, you know, appropriate seating six feet apart, have a discussion with kids about, you know, what we expect for appropriate behavior at these events and what we need to do to keep a safe environment there, in hopes that, you know, eventually the conference or, you know, schools are more willing to start letting kids back into the events because, you know, there is no question that our students miss watching their peers play. You know, they've been cooped up for a long time, and, you know, myself and a number of other athletic directors have just expressed an interest in having a conversation about, you know, continuing the process and moving that forward. So that's kind of what we've been up to. Mrs. Granny, if I missed something, let me know here, but, you know, I'm going to continue to advocate for our kids. I think that, and I've thanked all of our athletics, all of our teams, I think they've done a great job following our expectations and respecting not only our building and our expectations, but the buildings and expectations that others have as well.
And we know that students would, was provided that opportunity would act in a manner totally appropriate to sportsmanship. That would be our expectation because at a home event, you would limit it to home student body.
Correct.
We recognize that the temptation to maybe give a little grief to the opposite team might be there, but we will ask and expect our students to maintain the qualities of sportsmanship that we know they know how to do.
Does anybody have any questions I can answer right off the top of things or no?
Sounds great. Sounds like it's all moving in a good direction.
Appreciate all you guys' support, and it's awesome.
We also appreciate that other schools that may have initially been very conservative in the number of attendees are open to providing more opportunities for parents. We know the Cooley Conference just opened up parents to be able to travel to away games, so we see that as positive movement around the area and around the state. So Mr. Erkey, will you be sharing out good news with the coaches and then at a senior student meeting tomorrow, maybe?
You betcha.
That would be wonderful. And then you and I got to get out the blue painter's tape and start putting X marks the spot.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Urki. Our next item on the agenda is spring extra-duty contracts.
I don't know, Mr. Urki, if you wanna go through those or you want me to just indicate who they are?
Yeah, I think you can just go down the list. I can't think of any changes off the top of my head. I think everything is pretty much status quo.
Well, we'll have trap shooting coaches, obviously. We're fortunate to have the remaining coaches come back each year and we appreciate the expertise that they bring to that program under Karen Moline's guidance as a hunter safety instructor as well. Head baseball is Tad Boardman again. Softball, Tony Paletta. Head track, boys and girls is Nick Mooney. And we have assistant baseball is Brandon Shepherd. Guy Boardman will be assistant softball. JV softball is Mandy Boardman. Jake Ryder is our assistant track and middle school track is Stephanie Flaubert. So, we appreciate everyone who's returning to those positions and anyone who's new. And we'll wait for Mr. Pedretti to return and I know we'll need a motion and a second to approve those.
All this, you'll get that. All right, I was listening there. So, we can give a motion to approve those spring sports contracts as presented. That would be great. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is 7.13, the trap shooting team co-op agreement with Verocqua.
Well, we got the coaches, so now we need a team. Verocqua and DeSoto have had a very positive experience as a cooperative team. And so, Verocqua asked for a copy of the contract. I think Mr. Urki updated it for both schools and we would support a continued cooperative program between both school districts. I don't know if Mrs. Moline wants to jump in with any comments or Mr. Urki?
We're excited to be sporting that maroon and orange again together and just looking forward to having our kids reunited. We are prepared with COVID restrictions if need be to shoot on opposite nights if we need to keep cohorts together.
That's great.
Thank you again, Mrs. Moline.
Have you heard, you know, because last year we didn't, weren't allowed to do it, correct? Have you heard what kind of, you got a little idea what you might have?
The fall league actually went forward this year, so we're very optimistic. It's a little bit of a revised season moving forward and they're gonna make some determinations on either a modified state sometime in April, they'll decide that. Or if we'll still get to go back to Rome, Wisconsin to compete against one another. And the turnout looks really positive again. We haven't done a lot of advertising yet in Verocqua as we're waiting for everything to be signed. And the list that Mr. Urki put up looks like it's filling up quick, so we're excited.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Then, next item is 7.1. We need to make a motion on that agreement, right? So, Jeff Warbin makes the motion to approve the co-op. We need a second. By Kevin Walliser. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Then our next item is the 21-22, new slash modified course descriptions.
Is Ms. Raffringer with us, Mr. Grounding? I know Ms. Raffringer is, if she wasn't able to be with us, that I would try to help walk us through the course handbook. Primarily editorial changes throughout the document that you will see. And as we look at those, I just want to indicate that until we make those adjustments, the table of contents will reflect inaccurately in your handouts as well as on the projected image. So, please disregard those as we move through the handbook. And we do have Hillary Vark, I think, joining us tonight, fresh out of basketball practice, to talk about the new courses that she is adding. And so, if we could bring her in, Mr. Grounding, and I will go search for those while she speaks to them.
Can you hear me now?
That sounds just like the commercial.
All right, good.
And we can see you too.
All right. So, I did propose a few new classes. I offer a lot of classes, but I also cycle a lot of kids through my classes. And any given year, I end up with about 80% of our high school taking my classes. So, gotta have a pretty good repertoire of things to offer for the kids. One of the things that I took out of our handbook was an intro to horticulture class that is no longer offered at Western Technical College. That was one of the classes. I've actually never taught it since I've been here. It's never been put in the schedule and it's not even a technical college class anymore. So, I might as well not teach it and put something else in there. And then another one I took out was the AgMech Lab. It's intended to be a second-year Ag Mechanics course, but I barely have the first-year Ag Mechanics course. I've taught that, I think, once since I've been here. So, I took that out and if we can funnel some of those kids towards tech ed, if they're really interested in that for further instruction. Otherwise, you know, we can always work with independent studies and stuff too, like we tend to do a little bit when we have kids that are really interested in a topic. The courses that I proposed adding, one of them was soil science. So, soil science replaces intro to horticulture in the plant science pathway. There's seven ag ed pathways that I'm supposed to be teaching in. And so, that kind of makes sure that I'm still offering three classes that are related to plant science. Likely can be science equivalent. I have a biology license as well. And then soon I'll have a family consumer sciences license too. But, so with my biology license, I just have to submit the syllabus to the state and then that's reviewed by the science consultant. And then that's, that's the gist of being able to make some of my classes science equivalent. So, soil science likely will be science equivalent. And it's also something that we can transcript with Western. Arcadia currently offers that as a transcriptive credit and so we'd be hopping on that bandwagon with them. Pretty employable area too as far as, especially in our part of the state. So, I didn't think soil science would be that interesting to the kids. And I had mentioned, you know, to a few of my classes about, kind of throwing some ideas out there and there was quite a bit of interest. Another reason behind soil science as well, we have some kids that don't really like chemistry. And, you know, I think part of it is they don't really see the relevance in it. Things like soil science and food science are extremely based in chemistry and it's an applicable science and it's a really great way to see the relevance in it. So, another reason to add it. I proposed adding food science. I currently teach meats we eat and food processing. Both of those are rather vocational classes and I kind of miss out on some of those kids that are interested in careers in food science and want to take a higher level class. You know, they like being able to can and make cheese and all that kind of stuff that we do in food processing and some of the activities we do in meats as well. But there's quite a few kids that want to go further into it. And if you're in Wisconsin, food science and food processing, that area is a pretty good area to work in. I mean, even look at our neck of the woods and the cheese plants and everything that are around here. They need people who are skilled in food science. So, proposing that, it's kind of like a capstone on my food processing pathway that I have. So, that would be a third class. It would be more experimental-based though and not really like my classes right now where they, you know, are making a lot of recipes and, you know, canning big batches of things. Food science would be more experimental-based and looking more deep at some of the topics that we talk about food processing. Another reason to add that in, it is very based in chemistry. So, again, another way to help those kids find some relevance in that topic as well. We could transcript it to mid-state tech. That would be something I would have to look into and it would be pretty easy to make it science equivalent as well. The last class I proposed adding was academic and career planning. So, I'd had a conversation with Jenny and Scott about our work-study students. We have some students that are out on like work-study or work-coop type arrangements. We have some that are out on youth apprenticeship. For instance, any kid that's out on a work-study and happens to be working like on a farm, I could be applying for CTE incentive grants for those students. But a lot of times, you know, the sending them out or them getting out on work-study is not necessarily a planned thing. If they do youth apprenticeship, it's a little more planned, but some of these other things are not very planned out. And so, the academic and career planning is really geared toward those kids that are either looking at going right into the workforce or the kids that are looking at doing a work-study their senior year. So, working on building resumes and cover letters, doing career exploration, a big focus on networking with people in our community that can help them get to where it is that they want to be, finding mentors within the school and outside of the school and whatnot. And then, you know, it also kind of serves as a little bit of a jump board. If I have a good grasp on the kids that want to do work-study and I have a pretty good grasp on all the CTE incentive grants, that's more money that comes into our school, you know, and I can kind of figure out where we can put some of these kids so that we can get a little more money in our pockets and in our budgets here. So, those are the three classes that I'm proposing to add to my already long list of classes.
Well, that's very outstanding and I appreciate the work you're going to to get the science equivalency opportunities for our students because that expands the number of science courses that they are able to take. So, that if they want to take additional electives that way in science, they can do that. Or if they want to use one of the ag courses as one of their required science courses, they're able to do that as well. So, I appreciate that. It certainly is a bonus that you are working on your FACE certification because there are some courses without a FACE-certified instructor that we haven't been able to offer. And you've kind of picked up that area very well by moving into the meats we eat and some of the other courses that you've offered, which allow kids cooking opportunities associated with agriculture. So, you know, we're just real pleased with everything you've done there, Hillary.
Yeah, I got bored this summer and I decided to take the family consumer sciences praxis. So, my license is a early childhood to adulthood and so I can add on any license that meets the same age ranges based off of an exam. So, I got bored and I took the exam and passed it. So, I have it. I just have to add it on to my license.
Congratulations on that and we sure really appreciate that you're doing that to make those additional educational opportunities available for our students. Is why we got you here, I know we were gonna talk about this in the administrative report, but we've got you here. So, maybe if you wouldn't mind just taking a minute to explain the supervised agricultural experience that three of your students received grant funding for. And I think out of 30 chapters in the state of Wisconsin, there were only about 48 students who received these very generous grants to work on a project, Hillary. So, if you wouldn't mind sharing a little bit about how you guided them into, motivated them into, pushed them into doing this extra work and what it's gonna entail for these three students.
Yeah, so there's 200 and some FFA chapters, 20-some-odd thousand FFA members. So, yeah, they're, they're kind of in the top tier right now, the being in the 40-some that were selected to receive these grants. So, the Wisconsin FFA Foundation, every year they give out, you know, in the ballpark of $30,000 to $35,000 in grants to help kids start up their own SAE projects. So, SAEs, it's the work-based learning experiences that these kids have. Part of the three-circle model of ag education. So, one circle is classroom where they get technical knowledge. One part of the circle is SAE, which is their work-type learning experiences. And then FFA is like the recognition arm of it. So, every kid, every ag kid has an SAE. Some of them are really small and really basic. Some of them are, you know, they're running their own business or in this case, these three are taking on an ownership or an entrepreneurship role in their SAE. So, these were due around November timeframe, I believe, had to have been. I was not here at that time, so it was around November. We had four kids actually apply for them and three of them were selected. So, Evan Pedretti was selected for one of the three organic grants that they gave out. So, he's receiving $694. He is using that to buy cattle or to buy into some of the cattle on his parents' place. And I guess I'll talk up some of these kids too. I mean, Evan's been pretty involved this year in the limited stuff we've been able to have with FFA. Pretty determined, you know, he wants to make a go of it at farming. And so, he wrote a really excellent application. He had some really great statements, really nice things to say and a big vision, you know, pretty big for being a sophomore, so for what he wants for his family's farm. So, he's receiving, and I confirmed with him this morning, he got $694 as a check in the mail. Mackenzie Mosher received $700 for an SAE grant. Hers was sponsored by Blue Scope Buildings, which is down, I believe, in the Janesville area. So, she got a startup grant. She has an interest in going into plant sciences, horticulture, that sort of an area for her career. And so, she applied for like a garden starter, kind of a rack tower with lights and a waterer and all kinds of stuff in it and then a tabletop version of the same thing. In her application, you know, she wants to grow different types of flowers and vegetables and, you know, she, like I said, she's thinking about doing something like that for her career. This spring, she kind of took it upon herself that she de facto made herself the manager of the Stoddard Plant Sale location. I wasn't feeling the greatest at that time and I wasn't heading to Stoddard very often. And she'd send me a message and say, oh, we're out of whatever. Or one time I went up there and she'd made signs for the stuff up there on her own. So, so pretty, you know, takes the initiative, I guess, and is interested in it. So, she's gonna be able to buy some of her own equipment to start up her own plants and stuff at her house. The last one, Neveah Sanders is receiving $800 from Paul and Kirsten Gross, who, Paul Gross is from Johnson Creek. He lives in Ohio now and sponsors quite a few of these grants. She's using the money to purchase some raised beds for her house. When we were going through the application, you know, she, she's very interested in horticulture and she wants to do more gardening. And possibly if you go through Red Mound here this summer, you might see a roadside stand with some of her vegetables and things on it from what she's been able to grow with her raised beds. So, you know, with Neveah, she's, you know, not afraid to try new things. This spring, she participated in everything she could, even when we weren't in school physically, everything that she could FFA-wise and that's one of the things I wrote about. I have to write a statement in these applications. So, the applications are about six pages long, various statements, some budgets, some goals. You know, they kind of have to sell themselves and explain why they should get funding over, you know, how many of her kids in the state that are applying for it. And I will say, it was, like I said, I wasn't here at that point in time. I was, I was out on leave and I went in one Saturday night to just go give them some feedback on their applications. And I expected them to, you know, read it Monday morning when they got to school. And lo and behold, about a minute later, the application, I was leaving some comments on for the kid. He got in there and he starts talking back with me and, you know, nine o'clock on a Saturday and he's working on his SAE grant application. What an exciting time. So, you know, they were all pretty motivated to complete it. To get the money, they did have to write a thank you, so we did those last week and sent them off. And I had to submit paperwork to the Wisconsin FFA Foundation that verified they sent thank yous. And then in May, they have to submit a final report for the foundation. So, that includes the exact amount that they spent and what they exactly purchased with the money. And then just a kind of a personal statement that they might use in their future communications with their donors that they have for the SAE grant program. So, you know, it was a pretty good time. We've had a few kids apply for these in the past. This is the first time we've had them be successful with it. National FFA also offers an SAE grant program. And if I'm remembering correctly, last year they gave out like $200,000 in $1,000 grants. All those ones are in $1,000 increments. So, maybe that's the next thing that we can get these kids to work on is next year they can apply for some national grants. But, so it's a, it's a good step forward, you know, to have them be successful in it and be able to get some financial gain out of it.
We're encouraging them to do so and when you think only 30 chapters in the whole state had students who applied and we got four of the 48, that's just absolutely tremendous. Real, you know, kudos to Neveah and Evan and Mackenzie for willing to take this on. So, we look forward to seeing how their projects turn out, maybe eating... Maybe eating some of the veggies, uh, that Neveah grows or maybe there's a plant or flower of Mackenzie. And, and as far as steer goes or, or whatever Evan chooses to get. I, I don't know if we'll share a steak or something down the road, who knows? Meats we eat, right there in your classroom.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Hillary, appreciate your time.
Thank you. These guys, she does a great job and a lot of kids that even aren't going into ag careers, they're learning things in her class that they'll use all their lives and they probably wouldn't have learned them otherwise. So, great job.
Scrolling ahead to music, music, um, Mr. Schaefer, uh, shared with the curriculum committee that what the course that he is going to remove is acting and improv. Um, that was started several years ago when Craig Pierce was the music teacher. That was a forte of his and why Mr. Schaefer does enjoy working with musicals and helping. He does so more on the inter- instrumental or vocal side of things. So he's proposing, uh, to not offer that course, but instead offer a jazz ensemble. And this would be a combination of both vocal jazz for our vocal student performers and instrumental jazz. And you can start small with either one of those groups and kind of build the program. So, that is the new course that he is choosing to add there. Uh, there's some additional information in the course handbook, um, that we included in there pertaining to middle school students who qualify to take, uh, high school either math, algebra one or, um, science, physical science course. And of course, there's a recommendation process from teachers, uh, inviting parents, um, and the students to talk about if they would be interested in doing so. They have to score, uh, extremely well in, in advanced areas in both those content areas on either our own district assessments or on any state assessments that we can use as, uh, triangulating data. Uh, they also have to have the emotional maturity to be able to blend in with a high school course and, um, be able to work in that environment with older students. So, there's some, uh, initial work that goes into making that recommendation and moving those students into the position. If they do take, um, the courses, one of the things that our school board over the years was, was very conscious of is wanting them to have this opportunity, but not fearing that they might not be able to perform at, at the level that they want to. So, if we see a student who is struggling, even though they qualified and were very interested, interventions can be put in place or that student could choose, um, to go back and just do the middle school curriculum. Um, if they are doing, uh, well at that high school level curriculum, they can make a choice at the very end of the, um, course when they complete it, if they prefer to have a pass fail noted on their transcript or a grade. And for some students who feel that they can perform very high academically, getting a B might be a very good grade, but not the grade that they're looking for. Um, so they can choose to have it as a pass if they would prefer not to have the actual grade that they receive, uh, assuming that they do pass the course. Uh, and we assume that any of the students who do qualify, um, and choose to stay with the program will be successful in completing the high school course. Now, one of the reasons we were so wanting to make sure this opportunity was available for our students was in the hopes that they would take additional math courses or science courses, um, at the high school level, rather than just three required courses that they have to take to meet, um, state guidelines. And as you heard Hillary speaking tonight, Mrs. Bark speaking tonight about, um, the possibilities of more science, um, courses in the ag department, this certainly opens up opportunities for our kids if they are able to get some of those high school credits out of the way while they're in middle school. So, um, it would qualify for one of the three required courses that they have to complete either in math or science. It opens up their schedule to take more in those content areas or dual credit courses or start college now courses so that they can continue to move forward. Or it frees up their schedule if they want to concentrate in a different area. So this is really a wonderful option and we've added that language into the course handbook. And, um, we'll continue with some editorial revisions, um, as we complete the handbook. But outside of that, the, the majority of things that you're agreeing to see, um, in the handbook, uh, changes were centered around the music and, um, the agricultural departments. And we look forward to being able to offer these new courses. Um, we would ask for a motion and then I do have to go backward to 7.6 because we need a, a motion and a second on the open enrollment when we complete this one.
So, with that, are there any questions on, on all of that?
A motion for the new course.
The course description?
For the handbook.
If, if none, then I'd ask for a motion on the, to approve the course description handbook. Motion by Darris, seconded by Kirk. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And I guess back on 7.6 when Karen gave us the open enrollment state designation, we actually needed a, a motion to approve those recommendations as presented. So Kevin Waller makes that motion. Brent seconded it. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries for that. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our state statute requirement to have board, uh, take action on the open enrollments. And this last motion combined both the new courses and the new handbook.
All right. And, uh, so then our next item is 7.16, which is middle school, high school roof repair bids.
We'll, um, ask Guy, Mr. Boardman, um, and I don't know, Jackie's there too. Um, if both of them could join us and, and speak to, um, the bids that the building and grounds committee reviewed. And we could, uh, take information from the two of you at this point.
All right. So, a couple of months ago, we started getting bids on some problem areas on our roof. Um, there's three spots that we chose to start out with. There's two different contractors that, uh, uh, gave us good bids. One was Custafome out of Austin, the other one here is, uh, Lettiger Roofing out of La Crosse. Lettiger kind of ended up being the front runner and everything, just as far as they bid everything. They gave us a good bid, uh, far as product wise and everything. We have panels on our roof, which are raised about an inch and a half. So, pretty much what they do, both companies, we're gonna flute fill, um, put styrofoam over that, shape stuff down into the drains that we already have, and then put, uh, uh, membrane over the top. Uh, Lettiger uses, uh, EPDM, which is rubber roofing, which most people are familiar with. And after calling them today, we had a bid from Lettiger for about $150,000 and talked to them and asked them if they'd chew a little fat off and they're willing to come down $5,500. So, that would be my recommendation if Lettiger, if the board approves it to, uh, uh, grant the, the roofing project to Lettiger.
A little bit that we talked about in committee, we've talked about this a few times in committee. And Guy, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they do warrant this for 20 years and that's labor and materials?
Yes, 20 years labor and material. So if there's something that happens that is deemed their fault, they would come, they would fix it, of course, uh, uh, free of charge.
And you did, did check references with other schools?
Yep, we did check references. Both companies checked out good, but Lettiger, like I say, they're just selling a better product.
Jackie, do you want to share a little bit about, um, what you learned about the, the different materials and, and why?
Lindsay, Jackie's not here.
Okay, sorry.
So, pretty much what it boils down to, the rubber roofing is black, um, which is ideal in our climate because it helps with your snow load melting off and everything. Um, the TPO that Custafome proposed to use or whatever is, is, uh, there are places that do use it in the northern climates, but it's more for reflective purposes for in a warmer climate. So that's a little background to that, which the TPO is harder to patch and everything where this rubber roofing, the EPDM, is, uh, easier to patch. The other stuff is very intensive cleaning process before you have to patch it and everything.
Well, that, that's, um, appreciate that Guy for sharing that and, and, um, appreciate the, uh, company's willingness to meet us part of the way and, uh, provide us with a, a better bid. So, thank you for that work.
And this project would actually start in March, right?
Yes, yep. If it is approved, we get on the, uh, on their, uh, on their books right away. And that's when they predicted that they could start, was March, April, somewhere right on there.
I think over the years, we have had numerous roof repairs. Um, I remember one time 18 spots that were leaking simultaneously. We've just invested in some new lighting and we've got to protect that infrastructure. So, um, it, it certainly, um, is time to, to do the roof repairs.
Maybe just touch on all the areas that will be getting covered by this.
The three main areas, correct Guy?
Yes, yep. It would be the commons would be, uh, our number one. Uh, number two, I do believe, was the middle school. And then the third one is a section by the, uh, high school, middle school office.
So, so what we're looking for in order to get that on the books and get started, um, on their schedule and to be able to get started is approval tonight so that, uh, they can initiate work in March. And, um, they're gonna work with us if we have any testing going on so that, uh, the times that they have to spend an hour each day doing any kind of drill work and noise uh, won't interfere with students testing.
Is this front end money or, or being a spot gender? Okay, well, no other questions then? Ask for a motion then to approve this, this recommendation. Motion by Darris, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thanks for all the work. This has been, this has been a project we've been looking at for numerous years. So, way to bring it to a, to an end Guy. Anyway.
Problem, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So our next item then is, uh, the track feasibility study, building and grounds meeting.
Yes, Guy, you don't get to go away yet. Um, we're gonna bring you back to, uh, kind of catch us up a little bit on the track feasibility study and how we're going to move forward with that as well. Um, we can share that back in 2014, a, a committee of teachers, administration and building and grounds people began work and, um, actually took a look at what it would take to put either a competitive track or at least a practice facility there to ensure we had students, um, no longer on the highway sidewalks and hallways, um, who were track athletes.
All right, so in 2014, we did a feasibility study as far as, you know, they actually went as far as placing things on a map where we could put things and everything. There were some borings done, um, on the track as well in 2014. Um, recently, we did some borings too. Um, the borings that were done in 2014 and the ones that were done in 2020 pretty much, uh, shadow each other. Um, as far as putting a tractor right now, our soil density and everything is not the greatest. So we would have to, um, remove some of the material and put in breaker rock or rock, maybe some geo fiber, geo textile and, uh, make a, uh, a, uh, a better surface to, uh, put blacktop on. Cause there's no per- there's no reasoning, of course, putting anything there if we don't have a good solid base to, uh, uh, put our track on. What am I missing, Lindsay?
Um, we're agreeing to just basically still gather more information so that we can provide a presentation on what would be feasible to do at what cost and what type of surface, um, would go there. And would this be just a, a primer surface that could be used for a few years and then, uh, additional flux track added on top of that? Or, um, you know, what's the decision gonna be? So, there could be several phases to this project, um, or it could be a start and complete project. So, um, we just have to get the new data together because the figures we have are as old as, as that feasibility study, which you mentioned was 2014.
And just to, to mention it so everybody kind of knows or whatever, both companies that did the boring or whatever, of course, if you go four feet, you're gonna have your best outcome if you replace all the fill with four feet. Three foot's ideal, but two feet, both of them came to the conclusion that two feet is sufficient as long as we use some geo textile and material, get it packed in there. Of course, you know, when that point comes and everything, then of course we'll do compaction tests and everything and make sure that everything is, uh, correct before we do anything.
So we anticipate more information coming before, um, building and grounds. We did have a meeting with track coaches a couple of weeks ago to discuss their feedback and, and share with them that feasibility study. And so we will continue to gather information and bring it forward to building and grounds and keep the track updates going on, um, your, your director's report each month for future school board meetings.
Thank you very much. Thank you Guy. Okay, so our next item is the 2021 compensation updates.
Yes, um, the school board approved at the October meeting, the CPIU, which has been applied, um, uh, consistently over the years to teacher and support staff and administrative salaries. That was approved at the October 26th meeting and was instituted in November 6th, uh, payrolls. Um, but to complete the compensation packages this year, um, there is, is very little change between what was offered, um, to, uh, staff along the way. Um, support staff has a request that 12-month employees receive the 10 paid holidays. And we have some who get 10, some who have nine, and we wanted to equalize that so that it was even for everyone. In your folder, at the backside of your, at the end of your folder, you receive kind of a summary packet that is stapled in the top left-hand corner. And if you, um, care to look at that, uh, you'll see what I'm outlining here. Um, teachers also receive that CPIU applied against their individual salaries. Uh, and the proposal remains the same since 2017 and 18, that the educator effectiveness, um, be paid at the end of June based on administrative verification that they have successfully completed the educator effectiveness process. Um, this would carry over as part of their base for the next school year. And that has been something that has occurred since 2017, 18. So no changes there. Uh, we did look, the committee as well as the, um, uh, personnel and finance committee did review, uh, district starting salaries for first-year teachers. And we found that in the past, we have been a leader in this area, but we had shifted because some of our other competitive, competing competitors from area school districts, um, have now surpassed us at that starting level. So the proposal is to take the starting teacher salary from $37,859 to $38,500, which puts us about in the middle of the pack from area school districts, from West B, Roque, uh, and, and certainly La Crosse. These areas are areas that, uh, we compete against for quality teachers um, because they also have more residential housing for people to live in and they don't have quite the drive. Um, district office staff, the CPIU applied to their contracts as well. Um, their proposal is for the 12-month, um, employees also to receive the 10 paid holidays. Um, again, we have a little discrepancy on 12-month employees across the board. Some do, some don't, and it seemed like a reasonable equalizer. don't. And it seemed like a reasonable equalizer. Administrative director team contracts, again, those also have the CPIU applied to it. And then there are individual contract proposals that the board can review in closed session, if you like, and those are also noted on that page as well. Again, not much different than what occurred last year for the majority of the administrators and directors.
We'll approve this when we come out of closed session.
Yes, that would be fair.
We'll take motions on this now. Okay, thank you for that. Then our next item for business would be 7.19, which is the 2021 school calendar proposal.
The school year calendar, which was proposed, went through work with our teachers, and we appreciate their engagement involved in it. Also went to both the curriculum committee and Personnel and Finance Committee. And is very similar to this year's calendar with August. August 9 is the registration day. We hope that'll be in person this year. If not, we would continue the mailing process that we instituted last year that worked fairly well. All school photographs have been scheduled to occur at school buildings in September and October, just in case we aren't able to offer that in-person option in August. Staff in-service is in August, and those are noted on the calendar as well. In September, we have Labor Day on the 6th. On the 17th is an in-service day because we are hoping that'll be Vernon County Fair. On the 23rd is bullying prevention awareness, and the DPI has school observance days that they require us to note. And the bullying prevention awareness, as well as Unity Day are marked on our calendars. In October, some key dates are parent-teacher conferences. Elementary will continue parent-teacher conferences next year, hopefully in person. Middle school, high school found a lot of success reaching greater number of parents through the virtual meetings that could be scheduled at a specific time. And parents, some parents scheduled two back-to-back meetings so that they had more time. But this avoided the wait where parents want to see one teacher, but there's a line for that room, and they'll go stand in another line, and then the other teacher opens up. This way, you've got to schedule time with the teachers you want to talk to, and it occurs over the time period for conferences. The 28th is a, of October is a in-service day, and the 29th is a day off of school. The changes for middle school, high school are occurring on the end of quarters. So, those end-of-quarter dates are Friday, November 5th, then January, Friday, January 21st, then March, Friday, also Friday on the 25th, and then the last day of school, which is fourth quarter, which would be Friday, June 3rd. On those dates, students who are passing courses with a C minus or better will be able to elect to have a day off of school. They are welcome to still come to school if their parents would prefer. Then we will do an enrichment day for those students. The other students who are at school are students who are behind in work, need makeup work to be completed, or are academically at risk, and we will be able to focus on those smaller numbers and try to have them successfully complete the quarter. Now, this isn't all falling just on that one day. Please note that we offer after-school study programs three to four days a week for our students, where we try to get parents to encourage them to come and stay so that they can get the support that they need to be successful. So, we just want to make sure that on that last day, we have a little extra time to try to get them over that hurdle. November 11th will be a parent-teacher conference day for middle school, high school. We like to split the end of the quarter and then the start of the new quarter to make sure that we're rolling forward successfully. Thanksgiving holiday again will be the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, November 24th through the 26th. The December break is about a day shorter. That's just how the calendar falls. It'll be Thursday, Friday, December 23rd and 24th, and then the next week, with school resuming on Monday, January 3rd. The end of first semester is the 21st. On that Friday and the following Monday is a teacher in-service day. In February, the one thing that we did move out of February into March, typically, we've had the second or third Friday from year to year where we've had an in-service day or called it a snow makeup day if we needed that day due to extensive snow days. We realize that's going to be a long month, but we also know that that spring break time is later in April. And so, we moved that day to that in-service snow class day or snow makeup day to that March 11th. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled also on both days in March, on the 3rd and the 10th. And the end of third quarter, as I mentioned earlier, is Friday, the 25th of March. In April, the spring break will be Thursday, the 14th, Friday, Good Friday, the 16th, 17th, and then Monday, the day after Easter. Graduation would be May 27th, the Friday, and Memorial Day is the 30th. The last day of school would be a full day and fourth quarter for middle school, high school students who would be able to not have to come to school that day and start their summer vacation. We will also hold on the 3rd that eighth grade promotion. And then Monday, the 6th is our teacher in-service day. And then looking at most likely starting summer school that following week on the 13th and concluding that on July 1st. That would be the calendar proposal.
Anybody have any questions? Concerns? That we need a motion then to approve the calendar for 21 and 22 as presented. Make that motion. Motion by Jess, seconded by Brett. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Our last kids, our last calendar for our kids, you got the radio? Anyway, our next item is the Federal Family and Medical Leave Act.
You should have some information from me in your packet that Lisa Garvelia was very good to help put together because she wanted to share information with what did expire December 31st. So, we did have three individuals who did choose to use some of that emergency leave that was federally approved, emergency paid sick leave. The cost to the district was just slightly under $3,000, but Lisa pointed out to the committee that larger school districts had well over $20,000 worth of cost due to this particular federally approved program. One of the things that I wanted to share with the board is, I think, one of the reasons we have had such success in, and maybe not having that additional expense and people utilizing that was because of our alternative work arrangements, which we have continued over from last spring. And that allow, has allowed us to have teachers when they are home because they've either been contact traced, or in the case of one, two teachers that we had in our district that were COVID positive, one here at the high school and one at Prairie View Elementary. Both teachers were well enough that they could continue teaching from home. So, the grade level and content specialists were able to remote in and provide instruction to their students while we provided a substitute in the classrooms to assist with monitoring and supervising students and helping where needed. We have had other employees who have had to be home due to COVID as well, either contact tracing or having a child who may have been contact traced, who are also able to teach from home. And we believe that this is the best option when we are able to provide work in the home environment that they can do to meet the needs of the district. This is obviously not applicable to all of our staff because some of our staff, you know, if you're in food service, you can't cook the food and prepare the food and deliver the food to students from home. And it would not work for our custodial staff to any large extent because they need to be in the buildings to do the jobs. But for our aides and for our teachers, this has really been a very effective thing. On the handout I provided you, there are some contingencies that make it a fit and some limitations. And I just was seeking approval from the school board to continue offering this alternative work arrangements to our staff when it's most applicable and benefits the district.
Good thing. We need a motion then to continue with the alternate work arrangement plans as we've been presented. A motion by Ryan, seconded by, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is 7.22, job reclassification process.
In your handout, you have a job reclassification process, and we had to develop that because we do not have a policy or anything in our handbook that addresses that if an employee or supervisor or director or principal says, "I think we need to reclassify this job," it is different, or it has changed in the magnitude of responsibilities and skillsets needed so that we would reclassify it. So, in looking over this, I also talked over with Diane Hertzborn, our business manager, who has a background in HR as well, and pulled together a reclassification process that could be applied equitably and fairly. And as you take a look at that, we do need some guidelines to follow so that there's no question that there's favoritism, or you did something to support one person that you wouldn't do for another person. So, basically, if a vacant position exists and we need to modify or add additional responsibilities, a reclassification could occur. If one or more positions have been consolidated into a single position, position responsibilities are added or removed, reclassification can go either way. Position responsibilities require significantly higher levels of knowledge or skill than indicated on previous job positions. 50% to 80% of duties are classified at a higher level than the current job description. A request is received from an employee or a supervisor to reclassify and has appropriate documentation of duties and proposed job description, and also reviewing budgetary impacts. The compensation adjustment may or may not be made. A reclassification could occur with job duties changing, but the salary might not be adjusted in any direction upward or downward. Considerations in looking at compensation adjustments would be internal equity, external market equity, position range. Do we have a minimum? Do we have a midpoint? Do we have a maximum that we would set? Complexity of scope of new duties or reduction in duties, and time since last increase. If reclassification did occur from an hourly position to a salary position, then any existing compensatory time balances would have to be cleared within 30 days of the transfer of that position. There is a process noted on the back page there. Obviously, it's a review of current job descriptions, rewrite, looking for comparable job descriptions from other particular school districts for like positions. If there's any overlap in duties, and if we're able to clearly distinguish differences in levels of responsibility. It would include a listing of duties that would be prioritized from an order of importance. Again, that budgetary impact for reclassification to the current position and for subsequent years. Recommendation would be required if there was an upward compensation adjustment. And it would also need to compare that against other individuals who hold similar positions. We would take it to finance and personnel committees for that open meeting forum to ensure that it was very transparent that this was occurring, and it would appear as a separate school board agenda item for transparency. So, everyone is aware that this would be happening if it would so happen. A timeline here, based on when there's a request or a supervisor recommendation, would be 30 to 90 days to review that, gather the data, share the information, and then an additional time period of 30 days to go through the finance and personnel committee, which may be earlier and may be ongoing at more than one meeting. Because we certainly would want Personnel and Finance Committee aware from the start that this was occurring. And then obviously, onto the school board for any final approval. So, I think a process is very important to have, and certainly processes can be modified or adjusted as we move forward with anything like this. But I think it's important to ensure that if there is a reclassification, it is not ever viewed as done out of favoritism.
So, is this something we're going to turn into policy?
This would be part of our handbook. So, it'd be a guideline that we would follow.
It's not a policy, which takes a first reading or second reading, it's handbook. So, is that something?
Just a guideline.
You want approval of that then tonight?
I would appreciate that in order to move forward with the request for the reclassification that we have. Just because we go through the process does not mean it happens, though. It's just we have a process to review and look at it.
Those, we need a motion then to add that to the handbook.
I'll make that.
A motion by Gary, seconded, seconded by Jess. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay. Okay, well then, our next item is district administrator evaluation.
Would you rather let the principal reports get out of the way so they can all go to sleep?
Let's do that. Let's go to reports first.
Well, good evening. I see Mrs. Moline's there. Are you ready to start with your report, Mrs. Moline, and then will you fill us in on what you learned about the virtual school?
Absolutely, yes. We'll start with the virtual school, and there are 13 students at the January account data that are non-residents, which would leave 19 who are residents of our school district. So, that's the information broken down. Is there any other questions on that? Okay, moving on then into my report. Since the last school board meeting, we've had five IEP meetings. I'd also like to say that as the semester comes to an end here, I'm really proud of how all of the staff across the district, but in particular, I'd like to note the employees in which I supervise that have provided accommodations, title reading interventions, and support through special education. I'm proud of how all of them have worked to support our students and families during many transitions to ensure student success. They haven't let any of the quality of our services go down through all the challenges that's been presented to them throughout the course of the school year. So, I really want to note that and the importance and how appreciative I am for that. We have spent and will be receiving, we've submitted a claim for our Gears funding. Remember, that's the portion of our state assistance through COVID. We'll be receiving the majority of that money back from the state as it was approved. That was kind of the one that we decided to tailor first with all of the information and funding that we've sent or spent already because you have to write out different scenarios and responses to make sure that we're spending it in the appropriate manner. So, that is pretty exciting news that the district will be getting that reimbursement coming in here shortly. We've expanded some of our testing options and assessments here in our school district for our special education department. Over the last, oh, probably year, we really spent a fair share of money in updating versions and additions, which is important to make sure that they're valid and reliable. And we've also expanded some of our options that we've been able to offer in the past as possibilities of even cognitive assessment. So, I'm very proud of that as a school district that we can offer a lot of those very expensive assessments, but the ones that need to be offered and given to students to make sure that we're diagnosing and providing appropriate evaluations. Moving forward with that, utilizing those tests, we've been undergoing with a lot of evaluations and kind of finalizing. Some of that is school closure had obviously resulted in some of those concerning areas. And students who are in and out of schools presented challenges, whether they just were sick for a few days and then have to stay home, or they maybe were contact traced, or maybe their family found that it was best for them to be at home as a remote learner. So, that's definitely presented some challenges, but with new recommendations from some of these assessments. But with new recommendations from some of these assessments, there's online components and things that we can implement. So that's been really exciting. As a school district, I know that we frequently are talking about PPE and what we have on hand and what we need to continue to order, what staff might be needing for other equipment. And I feel very successful in reporting on my own behalf on what the supplies I'm required to purchase or have been purchasing at this point, that we've been able to secure not only enough of the supplies, but also finally starting to make some of those purchases at realistic costs, which we maybe are more familiar with. So a good example is we secured another two thousand blue surgical masks that we know we're going to need yet. And those costs were definitely significantly decreased from the past. So we're excited to share that out and know that we're continuing to move forward in the right direction and still have plenty on hand of all those supplies. And then the last thing that I just want to talk about through the Gears and the CARES funding that's happening throughout this state here in particular, but especially in our school district. It's given us another opportunity to pair up with our private schools, St. Matthews and St. Charles, and work with those two schools as a partnership, share out information in both ways. They share information with us and we can collaborate, which has been really, I think, a definite increased benefit of some of the funds that's happened. One specific example I'd share out is, well, actually, there's a couple. One is even cleaning products. Guy and Jackie have really worked hard to, you know, share out some information that they know and make sure that our community members and the people that are within our district boundaries are, you know, informed about some of those cleaning options and what they're using and doing in our schools to keep our students safe. At another level, you know, we talk about using LLI or Level Literacy Intervention at our elementary schools and our Title I programs. And some of our classrooms use some of those resources. And so through this funding avenue too, and using some Title I funds in addition with some of the other options that private schools have access to the funding sources now. We talked about some of these very valid and reliable resources that students may choose to attend our school at the high school level or later middle school when there are no longer grade levels at the private school. So they've been able to purchase this. Actually, I just delivered it last week. So it's just been really exciting to have some of these things happen in addition to having one of our private schools start using STAR reading and math so that we can have more longitudinal data on students if they do attend our school later on. So just want to share out that partnership as, I know it's been there, but it's also definitely continued to grow and evolve as we share resources and information. So any questions? Otherwise, that concludes my report for this evening.
Mrs. Moline, would you mind speaking a little bit about the work that goes on administering the private school Gears and CARES funding? Because in the board folder, they received information on me for these administrative costs that are applicable to our administrative team that's doing the work. And so I put together a proposal for the private school allocated administrative cost amount to be divided amongst those who are doing this work. But I think it's important that we share the type of detail that has to go into putting in the online budget requests along with documentation, uploading the information, meeting with the private schools at the time that's convenient to them, and what goes into all of this. So if you wouldn't mind sharing that help, the understanding, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So with more money comes more work, which is, you know, definitely worth it, in my opinion, because we aren't always, we don't always have the privilege of having access to all of the funding sources that we can use to expand opportunities, whether it's even at the public school or the private school level in particular. So they have, in addition to what they're allowed to spend the funds on, so it's very similar to public school. So making sure that, you know, they have COVID precautions in place in addition to long-term and short-term school closures, and that list goes on. In addition, they have what's called for our public and private schools indirect costs. So the administrative costs that go along with helping make sure that the money is spent out. The rules that private schools have is we purchase the items for them and then we deliver them or have them delivered to their school and make sure that they're spent. Because as a reminder, all of the funds come to our school district and then an allocation can go to the private schools, but it's not like we just cut them a check. So a good example is they just needed, you know, some more cleaner tonight, some more product cleaner, in which Jackie had been working with myself and the private schools. So tonight, right before the school board meeting, we had, you know, six emails back and forth saying, "Okay, I met with the private schools the other night at 5:30 again. This is their next list of supplies and things that they're going to need for moving forward with the CARES and Gears money. Jackie, this is the portion that I'm going to need help with." And securing these supplies for them and then billing those out. So most of it happens outside the school day because one of their schedules and their teaching commitments, obviously much smaller than our school even. And so the people in those leadership roles are typically teaching during the school day. And of course, my own role and the roles of others are quite extensive during our normal school days too. So it's typically after-school hours in which we make those happen. And then it goes into a budgeting process. So once I know what they're interested in having, I submit to DPI a budget proposal for approval. And then in that proposal, obviously, everything has to be categorized into the right sections. How many of each item is going to be purchased? So two webcams were needed at one private school. So I had to enter in two particular webcams, why they'd be needed. And then Mrs. Gronning is definitely a well, a much better writer than myself. So she has helped me to craft up all the reasons in sentences and paragraphs of why these meet the particular criterias. And you submit that for each area of funding that we're requesting. Once approval, then we secure those items. And after that point, we look at the budget, make sure that we don't have any adjustments, which frequently there were, you know, need to make some minor adjustments, make sure they're all in the right funding sources. And then we work with Lisa and Diane to enter those claims. And then, of course, Mrs. Gronning or myself will go in then and do that final approval after that. So yeah, there's quite a bit of process that goes along with it. But like I said, the amount of funding that we've been able to graciously receive has been a benefit to the school district as well.
And we anticipate potentially four times as much CARES money coming into our district between now and 2022, which would be about $572,752. And so in managing that, we do know that, you know, again, supporting the private schools, you know, even managing that type of money, budgeting process and stuff, we'll have to look at ways to compensate for overtime for our staff to manage something this large with all the requirements that they have. So just preparing people that when the government gives you something, they don't give it to you without a lot of oversight work that needs to occur. So thank you, Mrs. Moline, for your report. Mr. Folsing, I believe you're helping out for both elementary schools tonight.
I am. Mr. Olson just wanted to say he's glad to get back in the swing of things after the Christmas break. And up at Prairie View, they're starting their reading and math STAR tests. And pals will come within the next couple of weeks here. And he also wanted to say he's proud of his students and staff for all the hard work they've been doing the last couple of weeks to finish up the second quarter. We're also trying to plan our fifth grade ski trip. So we're hoping to do that in February. It's something that they do every year that is a lot of fun. So we're hoping we get to do that in February sometime. At Stoddard, we're going to start Stoddard, or Star, Star reading and math as well and pals testing in the next couple of weeks. We're excited to see all the hard work that the kids have been doing first semester. And we also gained six students in the last two weeks at Stoddard. So we welcome all those new friends the last couple of weeks. And we're proud we can help those students throughout the whole semester with either deliveries, food, materials. If a student was gone for any specific reason, I know one student was gone just for a day today and the teacher got a little folder together for that student. So it's been a really big effort trying to keep those materials in those students' hands every day, even if they're here or not there. So I'm proud of our teachers for getting that done because that's been a lot of work for them, working with those students at home. Teachers and staff are still working hard to meet the needs of all the students. It can be tricky when we're trying to do all these protocols, but I really feel like it's been a good, good place for students to be and we're excited to keep going forward. I noticed a little pep in her step after that snow day on today, so.
Oops. Well, yeah, it was good, you know. I really appreciate the decision made by Mr. Olson in line with the highway patrols and the different township patrolmen and women who are out examining the roads. We saw some pretty bad accidents occur. And we're glad that our school buses, our students and our staff weren't down the roads on Friday. So we appreciate that. And as Mr. Folsing is circling to get back in, we'll head over to Mr. Boardman to give his presentation. And if Mr. Folsing is able to rejoin us, we'll catch the last of his presentation.
All right, just got a few things to report. What we've been working on the last month here. The bus garage, we installed a new on-demand hot water heater. The old one was failing, so we replaced it. I mentioned before about a circulation pump that was in the boiler room. We did have a gasket that was leaking, but also found out that the internal seal was leaking as well. So we got that rebuilt and installed back in there. Everything's working fine. We did some boiler maintenance at Prairie View. One exhaust fan failed. And we had a valve that failed too. That's all working now. Coming up, I think this week, there'll be some boiler maintenance done at Stoddard. Ongoing plexiglass work, just trying to work out with the schedule of Mr. Folsing so we can use the wood shop to prepare that stuff, get it installed and all that. And over Christmas break, we did some CISA-10 safety training with our staff. And besides that, that's about all I got for the month.
Thank you. Betsy does not have a report this evening. Mr. Gronning, anything from you?
Nothing new to report. Her name's Roland Adams. That sounds great. Will he actually all be considered?
Wonderful. Thank you for that. And Tim and I are sharing out that in addition to what Hillary spoke about, the high school, middle school are planning separate winter fun day activities for the middle of February, kind of hopefully what'll be an uplifting day, including ice fishing, sledding, tubing, or other outside winter activities. We also have some inside activities for those who don't like the cold. We'll also be rolling out a virtual school-based, something that we're designing ourselves, ACT prep for our students to improve their ACT scores. Because the ACT testing, along with date testing, is still scheduled and is anticipated that our students will have to take all the tests, the ACT plus writing, the ACT Aspire, the forward exams. The Biology Club is planning on holding an e-waste collection date in late February as a fundraiser, including old cell phones and computers, et cetera. So, Mr. Gronning, clean out the barn, please. The Spanish Club is going to hold a virtual cooking class so students can prepare their own ethnic meal at home, which sounds like an absolute blast. And for those who didn't have a chance to watch the Holiday Assembly when it was available over the holidays, parents and family members and community can go to each school's webpage and click on videos and then still watch the Holiday Assemblies that were presented by Stoddard and DeSoto Middle School and High School students. Prairie View will have the Spring Music Concert. And Stoddard will have art classes in the spring second semester. So those two music concerts this year are being split between those schools. So that is the report I have.
Okay. Nobody else has covered everybody. Well, with that, then we would now go into closed session for evaluation. Thank you all. You can all check out. We are going to go into closed session now, so have a good night.
And then we will come back from closed session to close out the meeting then. I will head, and it looks like I, if you don't take all night long, I'll have enough battery. You can text me and tell me when to close. You can text me and tell me when to close.
We just reconvened back in the open session from closed session. And so with that, we said we were going to go back to the compensation.
Seven.
Yep, yep, for 7.18, which is the compensation updates. And we were going to recommend approval of the updates on the teachers and support staff contracts, and that we were going to have another meeting to discuss administrative contracts. So I guess we would ask for a motion to approve the teacher and support staff recommendations. Motion by Brent, seconded by Daris. All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that pretty much...
Takes us to correspondence.
Takes us to correspondence.
So all of them are just one motion for all?
Yes, for teacher and support staff recommendations.
With admin being referred back to finance and personnel.
Yep.
Correspondence, Jackie Kraszewski and Guy included an energy savings report in your information. And then there was additional information from Hillary on the SAE grant awards to the three students, Navea, Evan, and Mackenzie, and a commendation letter for Garrett Redmond that I included. It's quite a team effort when there is a medical emergency and our people come from all over. Ashley Watecki was able to come and help get ice, and Moline came in to assist. This phone in camp came in to assist and then manned the phones with the communication with the ambulance, which was on its way, the EMTs and with me. So we were, Garrett and I were applying the appropriate first aid for the situation. And it's a real team effort that comes together. But I was certainly very aware of how well Garrett worked with the individual who was injured and kept the student calm and relaxed until medical support could arrive. So it's certainly a tribute to preparation and quality of our staff, and I thought it was deserving that you were aware of it.
That's that?
That would be it.
Okay, thank you. So then we go on to any action items? I'm sorry, any items for the February 21st board meeting? Anybody want to bring up? Now I think we're ready for adjournment. Need that motion?
I'll make that one.
No, Kevin, motion by Kevin, seconded by Jess. All those in favor?
All of us, yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.[1776.12][1776.12](end of transcript)